Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Well, my submissions now deal with the claim for exemption in detail.
Yeah.
The first point is the eligibility point. And for that, please turn to Regulation 54a, behind tab 17.
Yes.
You see in 54a1 that a person is eligible for an exemption from liability to pay SILL in respect of a chargeable development. My submission is this ties the exemption of self-built housing to chargeable development. Therefore, chargeable development must exist before a person is even eligible for an exemption.
Yeah.
There was no chargeable development. In my submission, the appellant was not eligible. The next point is whether the claim for the exemption complied, if he was eligible, whether it complied with the procedural requirements in Regulation 54b2.
You want us to look at 54b2, yes. Yeah.
And the requirements are there set out. I start firstly with 54b2a2, must have assumed liability. By paragraph 2a2, the person must have assumed liability to pay SILL. And we need to go back to Regulation 31 to look at whether this was possible.
Yeah.
Regulation 31.1, as my lord is now familiar, a person who wishes to assume liability to pay SILL in respect of a chargeable development must submit an assumption of liability notice to the collecting authority. And so again, as there was no chargeable development, there could be no assumption of liability. In reality, the claimant could not assume liability for something which did not exist and may never exist. He may never have got planning permission.
Is that right? I mean, insurance companies do that all the time, don't they? They assume liability for things that might not happen. Just as a matter of language, you could assume liability for something in the event that it did happen.
In this case, if you assumed liability for something, if you assumed liability for the possibility that planning permission might be granted and the local authority was then charged with calculating potential liability, in reality, the resources simply don't exist for SILL officers to, every time a planning application comes in and there's a possibility of SILL liability, to do those calculations when the planning permission may never be granted or the planning permission changes. For example, in this case, the planning application did change, there were amendments, there was an increase of floor space. So had the officers started with calculating the liability on what had originally been submitted, it would have all changed again. It's not practical, it's not workable, and in my submission, that is why the provision exists, and it is in order that there is certainty, it comes back to certainty in my submission, SILL regulations have a purpose of certainty, and that only exists when we know what the planning permission has granted. My lord, whilst it's not determinative, this is supported by Regulation 31.2 with regard to the notice. It says it must be on a form published by the Secretary of State and include the particulars specified on the form. And Milner Friend has taken your lordship to that form. I understand that the form does not dictate the correct statutory interpretation, but the reason that the form requires a planning permission reference comes back to statutory interpretation, which is that the planning permission is required in order to know what has been granted permission in order that there is chargeable development, in order that the chargeable amount can be calculated. And so a planning application reference simply would not suffice. Yes, in this case, it was the same, but it was not for the same thing.
Although in the, sorry, in the form claiming exemption, a planning application number suffices. Is there any?
In the form claiming, in the form seven?
Yes, which is a supplementary bundle, page 30.
Yes, SILL Form 7 on page 30 of the supplement, page, it starts on page 29 of the supplementary bundle.
That's right.
Page 30, it says, it's right, it does say planning application number. But two things to say about that. The first one is that the assumption of liability form requires the planning permission reference, and that is what's required to be, that is one of the particulars required under Regulation 31. And SILL Form 7 on page 29 says at step one that the applicant should have already assumed liability to pay SILL in relation to the development. This must be done before any exemption can be claimed for. So it presupposes that the assumption of liability has validly taken place before this form is completed.
Yes.
My learn of friend took your lordship to the PPG that states that it may speed up the process to submit an assumption of liability form prior to planning permission being granted. But its effect, that the form may be submitted, the form may be completed, but its effect, i.e. that liability has been assumed, in my submission, does not crystallise until the planning permission is granted. That is just a step to speed up administration.
So you accept that the form can be submitted?
The form can be filled in.
Be filled in.
The form can be sent, as it was in this case.
Yeah.
But liability is not assumed until planning permission is granted. As I've said, it's not possible to assume liability for something that does not exist.
Well, the liability doesn't exist.
The planning permission doesn't exist.
Yeah, the planning permission doesn't exist, the liability doesn't exist, and therefore you say the assumption of liability.
Cannot, yeah.
It can't be, it can't be a prospective or latent assumption, it's got to be a real one, you say, you say.
And it's right on the fact of this case that the council did acknowledge that assumption of liability form.
What does that mean, though? What is, what is, if anything, is the significance of that acknowledgement?
Well, in my submission, nothing, because it does not make an invalid assumption of liability valid. The form looked complete, but the appellant was not able to assume liability.
So a merely administrative step?
Yes.
For good order. We've got your form, it's come in, is what it means?
Yes. Because whether assuming liability is valid or not depends firstly on whether the person applying is eligible in the first place, and secondly, whether it complies with Regulation 31.2, that being the requirements of the assumption of liability notice. And in my submission, the appellant failed on both tests. He was not eligible, and his form did not contain all the particulars required.
Yes.
My lord, the appellate also relies on section 208 of the Planning Act, behind tab 2, in relation to assumption of liability. Because in section 208.1, there is reference to proposed development, where liability to SILL would arise in respect of proposed development, a person may assume liability to pay the levy. In my submission, a person can have planning permission and still have proposed development. And that is consistent with the interpretation, assumption of liability can only occur where development has not yet begun.
Yeah.
And section 208.2 states that an assumption of liability, A, may be made before development commences. So it may be made before development commences in accordance with section 208.2, however, it does not provide that it may be made before planning permission is granted.
Yeah.
And furthermore, section 208.2b states that it must be made in accordance with any provision of SILL regulations about the procedure for assuming liability. And so it is subject to SILL regulations in any event.
Yes.
And my lord, Milner Friend also relied on Regulation 7.5, so that's the SILL regulations of tab 17.
Yes.
Firstly, my lord, in my submission, regulation 7 is to provide clarity to the collecting authority as to the commencement date. A commencement date needs to be inserted on a demand notice so that payment dates can be triggered, and this is important because it removes the burden on the collecting authority in investigating commencement. But Regulation 7.5 does not assist the appellant. The effect of it is that it closes the gap between the grant of planning permission and the commencement of development, such that it is not possible to assume liability with retrospective planning permission.
Yeah.
Returning back to Regulation 54b. 54b2.2, that the claim must be made by a person who has assumed liability. In my submission, it's simply not possible to assume liability prior to the grant of planning permission. Assumption of liability only takes place between the grant of planning permission and commencement of development, and therefore this requirement was not met.
May I ask something, which may or may not have anything to do with this? If I'm somebody who's engaging in a self-build exercise, forget about retrospective permissions for a moment. So I apply for planning permission, and I get it. Could I, at that point, work out for myself what the SILL will be, assuming, for instance, the council, for whatever reason, say, well, no, you can't have an exemption? I mean, the formula that we looked at, would I be able to apply them myself?
Yes, the chargeable rate will be on the, is on the council's website.
Right.
For the area in which your self-build would take place in. You would be able to find out the index rate, for example, from the RICS website. Just one moment, while I... And I'm told there's also an annual SILL rate summary that's uploaded onto the council's website, so that developers can work it out for themselves also.
Right. So this process isn't in order for people to get planning permission and then find out what the SILL is, and then think, oh, actually, we won't bother going ahead, because they can do all of that for themselves?
If they know that the area for which their, which their development, which a chargeable development is going to be, but the chargeable development doesn't officially exist until the planning permission is granted.
No, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, all right.
Yeah, I mean, they don't, they're not liable until development is commenced.
That's right.
Any number of things can happen, including the possibility that they might choose to sell on the development site to someone else, and no doubt there are provisions that attend to that.
Yes. Transferring liability, for example, yes.
Might sell to a developer, for example.
Yes. In terms of the council's position on assumption of liability, when it can take place, that's also supported by a position that would arise under Regulation 77, where the collecting authority and the local planning authority are two different bodies.
Do we have 77? Yes.
Should be there.
Yes, it is. Which provision?
In this situation, where the local planning authority, which would grant the planning permission, is different to the collecting authority.
Yeah.
The planning authority must supply certain information to the collecting authority within 14 days of planning permission first permitting chargeable development. That all happens after planning permission is granted. So in this situation, where there are two different bodies, an assumption of liability prior to planning permission being granted would be a nonsense for the collecting authority in this situation. Whilst it doesn't apply on the fact of this case, it is another example of why and how the regulations deal with planning permission coming first.
Right.
And then back to 54b. 54b2a1, the point about intending to build. The council's position is that the claim also did not comply with that element. The appellant had already started building works when he made the claim. The plain English interpretation of intends to build or commission the building of a new dwelling is forward-looking, doesn't apply to those who have already started and then need to apply for retrospective planning permission to regularise the position. My lord, that deals with the procedural requirements and why the council says that the appellant did not fulfil the requirements of a valid claim under 54b2. The final point is that the claim lapses in any event. Even if he was eligible, even if the claim was valid, it lapses under Regulation 54b3 because he had not been notified of a decision by the date that development commenced, which was the day he was granted retrospective planning permission.
Just a question. Why is it necessary also to provide specifically that the claim lapses? Because you're submitting to us, I think, that in the circumstances here, the claimant, appellant was not eligible for the exemption. So what does it add to provide in these circumstances that the claim itself lapses?
Well, the court may find differently. The court may find that the appellant was eligible and that his claim was valid.
No, no, I'm just, sorry, perhaps I'm not articulating this very well. Why is it necessary for the legislature to provide for the lapsing of a claim as well as it's being impossible? In certain circumstances? So not necessarily this case?
Yes.
But in circumstances parallel to this case and others too, perhaps? Why is it necessary on your construction of the provisions to have a lapsing provision as well?
The purpose, the purpose of the regulations is to fund development in the area that arises from chargeable development. There are exemptions, a number of exemptions, including the self-build exemption, which is also part of the purpose of the regulations. But those exemptions were brought in together with strict criteria and procedural requirements. They're not automatic, and there's processes by which notification by the developer or the owner throughout the regulations must happen so that the authority is aware of what is happening, so that the authority is aware that commencement has begun.
Yeah.
And so this provision doesn't just relate to those with retrospective planning permission, obviously it could also relate to those with ordinary planning permission. But in the case of retrospective planning permission...
Yeah, yeah, I understand. This is a, this is a general provision for, a general provision to rule out development being commenced, development, forgive me, a valid claim being pursuable where a development has already been commenced. This is about, this is, the discipline in this provision is to, is to require claimants to wait until notification of the claimant has been given before he, the developer, landowner, gets on with the development.
Until they know whether they've been granted the exemption.
Otherwise, they lose it.
Yes, and that applies to anyone.
No, sorry, my question was unnecessary. Thank you.
And as I understand it, this, as it happens, this effectively creates a bar in the factual circumstances we are, we have here, but it's not the fundamental basis on you, you say why?
No, no. The council's position is that he wasn't eligible and the claim wasn't valid, but actually, the argument's wrong.
Even if it had been, even if it had been valid?
Yes.
To begin development before you've been notified of the decision is to lose the exemption?
Yes. And when I come to deal with the respondents' notice, I'll go through the chronology in slightly more detail, but for the moment, to put it shortly, the planning permission was issued on a date agreed between the parties. There had already been an extension of time from the eight-week statutory time limit that permission should have been, by which permission should have been granted. That date was agreed as the 13th February. And the planning permission was issued by, yes, by the council, but it's the development management team and the case officer who was dealing with a particular planning application. It wasn't issued in consultation with the SILL team or because the council were liaising with the SILL team in order to say, we're not considering this claim, so let's go ahead and issue the planning permission. That was the deadline for issuing the planning permission, 13th February. As matters stand, even if all other submissions on behalf of the appellant are accepted, his claim of valid lapse. No decision was ever issued. My lords, those are my submissions in relation to the meaning of the regulations and the operation of the regulations together. Turning to statutory interpretation, my lord said at the outset that your lordships were familiar with the principles of the authorities, they don't take time.
And we've been reminded of them in the judgment of Lady, Mrs. Justice Lane.
Yes.
Do you, as did Miss Sheik, accept that that is a helpful, accurate, and for our purposes, complete summary of the relevant law?
Yes, I do, and also the Secretary of State put in the authority of O and Secretary of State for the Home Department to tag one of the authorities on.
O, yes. Do you mean O?
Project for the registration of children, British Systems, and Secretary of State for the Home Department, O, Secretary of State for the Home Department. But yes, apart from that, I do accept that, and it's accepted that a purpose of approach is part of statutory interpretation. But my lord, looking at the legislative purpose, the interpretation of the court below is still correct. The purpose can be gleaned from section 205 of the Planning Act 2008, behind tab 2.
205.
Yes. 205.2 states that in making the regulations, the Secretary of In making the regulations, the Secretary of State shall aim to ensure that the overall purpose of SIL. Is to ensure that costs incurred in supporting the development of an area can be funded wholly or partly. By owners or developers of land in a way that does not make development of the area economically viable. And at section two oh six over the page. Section two oh six one, a charging authority may charge SIL in respect of development of land in its area. So the purpose is to. Obtain funding by charging owners or developers in respect of development. As I submitted earlier, reliefs and exemptions are available and it's agreed that the self-build exemption. Was introduced to incentivise the self-build sector. And so exempting the self-build sector and other sectors is also part of the purpose of the regulations. However, as I submitted earlier, the introduction of the exemption was accompanied by strict conditions and procedural steps. Ensuring that claimants of exemptions comply with conditions and procedures. Is also a clear part of the purpose of the regulations. The exemptions could have been automatic. But they are not. Self-build exemption is not a free-for-all exemption for all self-builders. There are limits. And those strict criteria don't just apply for self-build, they do also apply in relation to other reliefs and exemptions as well. Whilst it's suggested that interpreting the regulations in this way bars a small number of self-builders. I e. those with retrospective planning permission. Actually, a self-builder eligible to make a claim. Under regulation fifty four A, who makes a valid claim under regulation fifty four B two. Could commence development before he's been notified of the authority's decision, as we just discussed. And did also then become liable to the levy. So he was eligible, he was entitled to the exemption, he made a valid claim, but because he didn't wait until he was told of the decision. The claim lapsed. That doesn't just apply to retrospective planning permission, it applies to all.
Yeah, that's fifty four B three.
Yes. My point is that just because a self-builder is entitled. Does not mean that he or she will receive the exemption. That is the way the regulations operate. That is the way they are intended to operate. To have procedural requirements. That feature of the regulations requiring compliance with strict criteria does not just apply to exemptions. It also applies to, for example, to the submission of a commencement notice. Failure to submit a commencement notice at the right time can lead to penalties.
As I understand, the argument is, well, yes, of course you would have. Procedural controls and rules and regulations, but for somebody in the claimant's, appellant's position. It is impossible for them to get an exemption because if it's a retrospective permission. Then they can't do it, it's simply impossible. And rhetorical question is, well, why should it be impossible for them?
As the Secretary of State submitted, the overall overarching scheme of planning law is to encourage. It's not to encourage breaches of planning control. And whilst retrospective planning permission regularises a breach of planning control, the breach has taken place.
Yes, but I suppose. This case. On the facts as they were agreed before the judge. The need for a different planning permission arose after the work had started, when the inadequacy of the foundations was established. So they had to regularise the position after the event. And they were acting in good faith throughout, but in that situation, it's not possible for them to claim the relief by anything. They couldn't do it.
No, that situation also applies in general planning enforcement. Acting in good faith is not, does not mean that you haven't. Committed breaches of planning control.
No, I follow that, but. A person who gets planning permission and then sets about doing something in breach of it, or who starts off without any planning permission. One could see a statutory purpose of denying them. An exemption which they might otherwise. Be entitled to because it would be conducive to planning control. But here, where. They appear to have done everything appropriately. What is the statutory purpose of denying them the exemption?
For the same submission, my lord, that the overarching planning act. Discourages breaches of planning control and. The strict criteria and procedures and the SIL regulations rely upon forward-looking, advance notice. Informing the local authority of the steps that are being taken at every stage. And none of that can happen, none of that due process happens in the case of a retrospective planning permission. And Milan, for instance, that disincentivises self-builders in a way which runs contrary to the purpose of the regulations. Where a purpose is to incentivise self-building, but it disincentivises self-building without planning permission, not self-building. And that's in part and parcel of the broader statutory framework of ensuring that. Planning permission is applied for the works that are being undertaken.
Yes. I suppose it may be said, I don't know. That the planning system operates in public interest, that's axiomatic. It will therefore, from time to time, in serving the public interest. Operate harshly in its effects on individual landowners. Through absolutely no fault of their own. It's of no consolation at all, if that be right, and if your argument be right. It's no consolation, of course, to Mr and Mrs Gardiner to hear that, but. You might submit is how the system, the statutory system actually operates.
Yes. And that, it does also operate in.
If you're right.
Yes, yes, and it does also operate in that way in general planning enforcement, where people through no fault of their own. May do works or breach enforcement notice, for example, in good faith without knowing, without realising.
I mean, the facts here are not in dispute, there's no question but that. The discovery that the foundations were not, in fact, adequate was wholly unforeseen.
The council has nothing to gain say that.
No, 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 no.
I am, yes.
So that's really, that's what has generated the. The questions you've had from the bench on this point. But this is a case which, on the agreed facts, demonstrates that the system can operate. With disadvantage to those who have behaved entirely in good faith, innocently and. Done what seemed right.
Section seventy three A makes no distinction between. Classes of person.
And I hasten to add, if your argument is correct, your argument is, either is or is not correct, we shall have to decide.
Yes. One more point in regard to the statutory framework supporting. The operation of the regulations in this way is that it, as I've already said, it aimed to create certainty as to when and how liability would arise. And favouring the appellant's interpretation would not lead to certainty. As it would create a situation in which the local authority would be calculating liability and exemptions. Without knowing whether planning permission had been granted or for what. My lords, my final category of submissions relates to the chronology of the claim for the exemption in the event that the court finds the appellant's interpretation.
Is this the respondent's notice point? Yeah.
As I've already alluded to, the ordinary eight-week time limit for determining a planning application. Would have meant that the decision was issued on the twenty fourth of January twenty twenty. Amended plans were submitted on the seventeenth of January. And on the same day, the case officer wrote to the agent, and we find that in the supplementary bundle. Right at the back. From page one hundred and fifty-two onwards is a series of emails between. Laura Gettner. And the planning agent. And on pages one hundred and fifty-six to one hundred and fifty-seven. We can see that she writes. To Mr Palmer and says, thank you for the amended plans, that's at the bottom of page one hundred and fifty-six. The day she gets them, she writes to him, and over the page on page one hundred and fifty-seven, she says, just to confirm before I carry out the reconsultation. Are you keeping the loft space as part of the proposal? I will get your agreement to a determination date once I figure out dates, but if you could just confirm the above please. So she's asking a question and setting out the fact that the determination date will have to change. Only, she gets a reply on the twenty-second of January, which is on page one hundred and fifty-five. Where it's confirmed that the owners wish to retain the loft. And then on page one hundred and fifty-four, we see that she writes saying that she'll send the fourteen-day reconsultation out, that's at the top of page one hundred and fifty-four. These, can you agree an extension of time until the thirteenth of February? I return email. And on page one hundred and fifty-three, we see that that deadline is confirmed. And reconsultation started on the twenty-third of January. And then. What we have if we look at the chronology on page eighty-eight and eighty-nine of the. Third of February twenty twenty corrected SIL Form One submitted by appellant. So that corrected SIL Form One, a form which should accompany the planning application. Was submitted after the original deadline, which would have been the twenty-fourth of January twenty twenty. On the eighth of February, which was a Saturday. SIL Form Two and Seven was submitted. On the tenth of February, which was the Monday. SIL Form Two was returned because it was not signed. And so it was on the eleventh of February. That the signed SIL Form Two was returned to the council. And on the same day, the acknowledgement of receipt of the assumption of liability was sent. Knowing, having agreed, that the deadline for the planning mission or planning application to be determined was the thirteenth of February, two days later. The council could not possibly have dealt with a claim for an exemption. In two working days. And the response of the appellant is that this submission should fail because the council accepts it would always have made the same decision. Council had been saying in correspondence over and over. That there could be no claim because this was a retrospective planning permission. So the factual situation would not have changed. But that's not an answer to the point. This point does have wider implications if the appellant succeeds. On its. Appeal in relation to the interpretation of the legislation, because this situation could arise again where self-builders with retrospective planning permission. Make a claim. In a very short time scale before a deadline for planning application to be determined. Expecting local authorities to make decisions within extremely short time scales. In or out of a pandemic. The phrase as soon as practicable, which appears in regulation fifty four B four, which is when the council must notify the claimant of their decision. Does not mean two days. And to find that would create unreasonable pressures and time scales which were not envisaged or intended.
Well. Question might arise. As a prior question, what was there to require them to do it?
To assess the claim. It's put very simply by the appellant that all they had to say was that the exemption could be granted, but the exemption doesn't exist in a vacuum. The council calculates liability and then calculates the exemption.
What compulsion was there on the council through the statutory scheme? To make that determination within any time scale? You're submitting that for pragmatic purposes. Practical purposes, it was simply not possible to do it, to turn it around in two days. That may or may not be right. But we might be interested to see the statutory. Frame for that. Submission, as it were, what. What time scale does the statutory scheme envision?
That. Turn back to regulation fifty four B. Forty-four. As soon as practicable after receiving a valid claim, the collecting authority must grant the exemption and notify the claimant in writing that the exemption is granted.
So. As soon as practicable is. Is that an entirely subjective requirement?
No. It must be objective. On an objective view, two days is not as soon as practicable.
Much of the statutory scheme, of course, has defined time limits. This doesn't.
This phrase does appear elsewhere as well. It appears, I think, in relation to a liability notice being sent after the grant of planning permission. So it does require some analysis of the factual situation. But here, the appellant could have submitted the claim in the format he did weeks beforehand. There had been correspondence with the council disputing the interpretation for some time.
So what recourse does the claimant have in these circumstances? If the council, the collecting authority, is taking a long time, what can the claimant do?
It doesn't seem to be a framework for that within the regulations. In relation to a liability notice not being sent as soon as practicable, then it has been found that the liability notice could not be relied upon.
All right, well, you can't point to any provision that gives the claimant the course where it seems perhaps reasonably that the collecting authority is taking far longer than "as soon as practicable" would cover.
No, I can't.
Right?
But it's also not an answer to say that the council could have issued the planning permission later, as was suggested earlier. Time limits are governed and councils are monitored and assessed as to how long they take to determine planning applications. And so, my lords, to conclude overall, the appellant was not eligible to make a claim. His claim was not valid. And even if it was valid, he simply submitted it too late in order not to be caught by Regulation 54B3. And just on that last point, on the local authority issuing the planning permission later, there was no request from the appellant that the planning permission should be issued later than the 13th of February.
Right?
Lord, in a second, Mr. Seale.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lender, thank you. Yes, Mr. Hearn.
My lords, the Secretary of State was joined to these proceedings by order of Mr. Justice Holgate and directed to produce submissions to assist the court, given the wider implications of this case. And it's in that spirit that we remain involved at this stage.
Yes.
The Secretary of State's position is that it is not possible to claim the self-build housing exemption where the chargeable development is first authorised by a Section 73A permission. So a self-builder may be eligible for the exemption, but to actually benefit from the self-build housing exemption, a person must comply with the procedural requirements of the SIL regulations. And the SIL regulations have been designed to operate so that the exemption is not available for chargeable developments authorised by a Section 73A permission. In short, that's because they cannot meet the procedural requirements for the exemption with a Section 73A permission. And in my submission, the regulations did not need to spell that out in terms because it is clear from going through the regulations. It simply does not work. The position in summary is that the regulations, the procedure in the regulations is designed so that there should be a gap between the grant of planning permission and the commencement of development. And it is in that gap that a person must make a valid assumption of liability under Regulation 31, and then make their claim for the self-build housing exemption and have it determined under Regulations 54A and 54B. Now, in the case of a normal planning permission, there will be that gap between the grant of planning permission and commencement, but in the case of Section 73A permissions, because of the effect of Regulation 7.5, that gap is reduced to nothing. It's eliminated, so that that prevents the self-build housing exemption being available. So that gap issue is the main point, but it's not the only point. I'll come on to this, but I would add also at this stage, by way of introduction, it is also apparent from how Regulations 54A and 54B are drafted, and in particular Regulation 54A7. So in my submission, the terms of Regulations 54A and 54B show that the self-build housing exemption is not intended to be claimed until planning permission is granted. So that is another plank, if I could put it that way, in addition to the gap issue, the way in particular Regulation 54A is drafted. So, my lords, it's necessary for me to traverse the same territory that my only friends have gone over. I'll attempt to do it as quickly as possible to avoid unnecessarily taking the court's time and only take time on those points that add to it. So as far as the definition of chargeable development is concerned, I'd make the point that this is something which applies generally in the SIL regulations. It's not just for the self-build housing exemption. Your lordships, well, I'm sure have picked up already that some parts of the regulations the court has been directed to today apply generally to all developments, and some parts of the regulations apply to other reliefs. So it's not just self-build housing relief, there's the social housing relief, charitable relief, et cetera, and some parts, of course, relate only to self-build housing exemption. But Regulation 9.1 is one that applies generally. And in terms of the question about what Regulation 9.1 and planning permission is granted means, in my submission, that means development for which there is a grant of planning permission. So it does not mean development for which a planning application has been made, and it does not mean development for which planning permission may be granted in the future. It needs a grant of planning permission, not just the making of a planning application. And in my submission, the use of the present tense shows that you look at the position as it stands at the relevant time to see if a chargeable development is in existence. And in my submission, the use of the present tense excludes the future, and indeed excludes the future conditional. So unless and until planning permission is granted, there is no chargeable development. And that, of course, follows through to Regulation 31, but also through to Regulations 54A and 54B because they refer to chargeable development, which is as defined in Regulation 9.1. Then Regulation 31 is also something which applies generally in the SIL regulations. And this covers assumption of liability. A person assumes liability in respect of a chargeable development, as I've just said, that requires planning permission to be in existence for the development in line with Regulation 9.1. And it makes no sense, in my submission, to be able to assume liability only for, for example, planning permission to be refused or granted in different terms from the planning application originally made. I would also just endorse briefly, if I may, the reference to Regulation 77 my only friend made, because your lordships will see from the terms of Regulation 31.1, a person who wishes to assume liability submits an assumption of liability notice to the collecting authority. Now, the collecting authority is not always the body which considers a planning application and grants planning permission. It usually is, but not always. And that's why there's the provision in Regulation 77 where the collecting authority is not the planning authority, for the planning authority to send the collecting authority within 14 days after the grant of planning permission details. And the upshot of that is that in certain cases, the collecting authority might not know of a development until they're sent the information under Regulation 77 within 14 days on which planning permission is granted. So as I say, usually, the collecting authority is the body that grants planning permission, but that's not always the case. And that, in my submission, underscores the point, the assumption of liability is intended to follow the grant of planning permission. So that is, as it were, the interpretation we say should be adopted, looking at the regulations themselves. But as well as the regulations, Regulation 9.1, 77, and 31, there are, in my submission, two other things which confirm our interpretation of the regulations and show that an assumption of liability is supposed to come after the grant of planning permission. I make it clear that these are things I'm referring to, as it were, by way of confirmation, rather than relying on them for the primary interpretation, but in my submission, they are relevant for the statutory interpretation process. The first of those arises from Regulation 31.8 and 31.2, and this goes back to the form that's published by the Secretary of State. Your lordships have already seen that at page 32 of the supplementary bundle. I won't take you back to it. But Regulation 31.2 requires an assumption of liability notice to include the particulars specified in a form published by the Secretary of State. And that requires the planning permission reference to be stated. I don't, I hope I overstate my case on this, but it's worth remembering here that the Secretary of State is the author of both the regulations and the form. It's not as if, as it were, these are regulations that have been prepared and adopted as primary legislation, the form and the SIL regulations effectively drafted by the same person. So that's the first point. The published form requires planning permission reference to be stated. The second point we say that confirms this is the guidance that was published by the department, as it then was, soon after the SIL regulations were introduced into effect. We've not seen that yet, so I'll ask your lordships, please, to go to that. That's the supplementary bundle. And the first page is page 141, towards the back. The document, just to orientate the court, starts at page 137, which you'll see is an information document published by the department on collection of SIL, as I say, published shortly after the regulations were introduced into effect. And if I ask your lordships to go, please, to page 141. And then paragraph 1.3, third bullet point down. It says, "Where planning permission has been granted, the collecting authority will expect to receive an assumption of liability." A similar thing is then stated on page 144 at paragraph 211, first line of that paragraph. "Once planning permission has been granted, the regulations allow any single party to come forward and assume liability." So those two paragraphs, 1.3, third bullet, and 2.11, make clear that an assumption of liability notice is expected to be submitted only once planning permission has been granted. In my submission, that confirms the express wording of the regulations, in particular Regulations 9 and 31, but read in the context of 77 as well. And the point here is about assumption of liability generally. So of course, the document I've shown your lordships relates to the SIL regulations before the self-build housing exemption was introduced, but the assumption of liability is something which exists for all SIL development, and the self-build housing exemption was added into the SIL process, which was already established, which already existed, and for which this guidance had been published. So those are two things we say that confirm our interpretation of the regulations, that an assumption of liability is supposed to come after the grant of planning permission. Now, a person can, of course, submit an assumption of liability notice before planning permission is granted, but it's not effective at that stage because a person can only validly assume liability once planning permission has been granted. Your lordships saw the part of the current planning practice guidance, and in my submission, the interpretation of the Secretary of State is not inconsistent with that guidance. Now, of course, it does speed up the process if the notice is submitted, that's the word that's used, submitted, before planning permission is granted, but it is, in my submission, not effective until planning permission is granted. An attempted assumption of liability before planning permission is granted would only be valid and effective once planning permission is granted. I think, as the judge below put it, "Assumption of liability does not crystallise until the grant of planning permission." I'll just pause, if I may, here, just for the sake of clarification, nothing substantive turns on it, but the planning practice guidance is not statutory guidance issued under Section 221 of the Planning Act, just to clarify that. So in my submission, it does make sense that a person can only assume liability for a chargeable development once planning permission is granted. The reasoning behind that, of course, is that before planning permission is granted, the development might not be permitted at all. Planning permission could be refused, but it is also the case, this is just as likely, that the development might be granted planning permission in different terms from the planning application. So it is reasonably common, certainly not unusual, for planning applications to be amended while they're being considered prior to the grant of planning permission. It is also the case, albeit rarer, that conditions can be imposed affecting, for example, the use of parts of the development. And also, it is, again, rare, but still happens sometimes, that you get a split decision, and authority might permit part of what's in an application and refuse part of it as well. So it's, in my submission, it does make sense that you can only assume liability once planning permission has been granted. So then moving on to Regulation 54A. And this is the point I made at the end of my introductory remarks, as it were. In my submission, the terms of Regulation 54A show that the self-build housing exemption is not intended to be claimed until after planning permission is granted. So the exemption is only... So the exemption is only available, to be claimed, when planning permission is granted. And there are two points that I rely on for that. The first is, the first follows from the submissions which we've been making, and that is because Regulation 54a.1 refers to a person being eligible only in respect of a chargeable development. And I've explained how, in my submission, that's tied to the grant of planning permission. But the second and additional point is that it's important to understand how Regulation 54a works. Because if you look at 54a.1, it doesn't apply just for self-build housing. It applies for development that comprises self-build housing or self-build communal development. And it's important to understand how this self-build communal development feeds into consideration of an exemption. Your lordships will see, for example, paragraph 3, the amount of any self-build communal development that can claim the exemption is to be determined in accordance with paragraphs 4 to 6. That then sets out the calculation, and there is a concept of relevant development. So at the end of paragraph 4, there's a reference to the benefit of the occupants of relevant development. Then in paragraph 6, there is the formula for calculating the amount of any self-build communal development, and that formula is stated in which B is the gross internal area of the self-build housing and relevant development. And then, relevant development is actually defined in paragraph 7. Relevant development means development which is authorised by the same planning permission as the self-build housing in question. And in my submission, that shows, that means, that planning permission must have been granted for Regulation 54a to work. But more importantly, for the point of principle of interpretation, Regulation 54a assumes that planning permission is granted by the time the self-build housing exemption comes to be considered. Because you simply cannot apply the second of the two types of development that's eligible for this exemption without there being a planning permission. And it's also worth, if I may, at this stage, pointing out that self-build housing is not just like an application in this case, where it's a single person seeking planning permission to build a single house. Sometimes it is, not always. Some developments comprise a mix of self-build housing units and market housing units. It may be that a planning application is made, for example, for 100 units, 10 of which would be self-build plots. And they will eventually be built out by self-builders, but the planning permission will have been obtained by a developer. This is the point made in paragraph 67 of our skeleton argument. So you need to know the amount of the self-build housing out of the whole housing in the development that's being put forward before a collecting authority can judge how much of the development should be exempt as self-build housing. And in my submission, you need to have the development proposals fixed by the grant of planning permission to do that. That may be a condition or a Section 106 obligation, but something will identify what are the self-build plots. So whilst the case before the court is straightforward, the court is interpreting regulations that apply to be applied in various circumstances. And in my submission, Regulation 54a needs planning permission to be granted before a claim for an exemption can be considered and an amount can be calculated. Whilst it's possible, in a case like this, with a single house, to contend really that it makes no difference that planning permission didn't exist because there was one house and it was either exempt or it wasn't. Regulation 54a applies to circumstances that are much more complicated than just this circumstance here. And in my submission, in cases of any less simplicity than this one, a collecting authority could not assess the self-build housing exemption to be granted on a claim without the development being defined in a planning permission. So Regulation 54b, then, and I would stress, my lords, please, what is said in Regulation 54b.1? To benefit from the exemption, a person must submit a claim in accordance with this regulation. So in my submission, when one is asking, well, what is the intention underlying this particular part of the regulations? The intention, in my submission, is that if a person cannot or does not submit a claim in accordance with the procedural requirements in Regulation 54b, they cannot benefit from the self-build housing exemption, even if they would otherwise have been eligible for it. So Regulation 54a talks about eligibility. Regulation 54b is the procedure that needs to be followed to, if I can put it this way, convert eligibility into benefit. The second point I'd make in relation to Regulation 54b is in reliance, or by reference to paragraph 5 of the regulation. A claim for an exemption for self-build housing is valid if it complies with the requirements of paragraph 2. And in my submission, there are two key elements of paragraph 2 as far as Section 73a planning permissions are concerned. The first is what we find in paragraph 2a.2, which depends on the assumption of liability. And a claim can only be made by someone who has assumed liability and validly assumed liability in my submission. The next key element of it, and indeed, there are two parts to this, are what we get from paragraph 2b and paragraph 3. 2b says, a claim must be received before commencement. And 3 says that a claim lapses if development is commenced before a decision is notified on the claim. And in the circumstances of this case, both of those work together. But as my Lord Justice Limbom identified earlier, this, paragraph 3, of course, applies to all planning permissions, prospective ones as well. So a person must have the discipline to wait for the notification on a claim. A person must wait for the notification on a decision on a claim for self-build housing exemption. And that, of course, is fine if it's a normal prospective planning permission, because they can wait for that decision, because they've got time to commence the planning permission, normally three years to commence the planning permission. But of course, it can't be done for Regulation, Section 73a planning permissions, given the provisions of Regulation 75. So those two elements, 75, sorry, those two elements, the effect of those two elements is to squeeze away any ability to benefit under a Section 73a permission. You can't make a claim before planning permission is granted because there's no assumption of liability, no valid assumption of liability. And you can't make a claim after planning permission is granted either. And that's as a result of the deemed commencement by Regulation 75. So as the judge below put it, it is simply impossible for someone with a Section 73a planning permission to escape that. There's also one further point to take from this, which is the wording in paragraph 2a. Roman 1 intends to build. I don't put too much weight on that, of course, but in my submission, that is forward-looking to build in the future. And the facts of this case...
Where are you now, intends to build? Where are you?
Sorry, my, it's paragraph 2a.1.
Yeah, intends to build, yeah.
Yes. So it's forward-looking, intending to build in the future. On the facts of this case, we set out the references in, I think, paragraph 3 of our skeleton argument, the rebuilding here commenced before planning permission was sought. And that is partly why it had to be a Section 73a application. I mean, just to divert for a moment, somebody in that situation that discovers they need to do work for which they don't have planning permission always has the option to stop at that stage and get planning permission before carrying on with the works. And that would be a straight Section 70 prospective planning permission, because they've discovered they need to do works for which they've not got planning permission. They stop before they do those works, get planning permission, and then that's not a Section 73a planning permission. They're not caught by this because the planning permission is for building operations that are all prospective in the normal way.
I mean, you can intend to build something that you're actually building, can't you?
This is certainly not my best point, and that's why I say I don't put too much weight on it. This is something which I recognise can be argued over.
Right. So is that a yes?
You can intend to finish building something you have started building.
Yes.
What we're talking about here is intending to build a new dwelling. So in my submission, the appropriate reading of this is that you ask, do they intend to build a new dwelling? The answer to that is no, they've started building a new dwelling. It's not an intention. It is something which is actually underway. And that's why, in my submission, that's the right way to read it.
To read it as being underway?
No, sorry, to read it as something which is in the future.
Yes. Well, you may be assisted by the words or commission the building of, which are the other part of this.
Yes.
Intends to build or commission the building of a new dwelling. And you might submit, though you haven't yet, that to take those two elements together strongly implies that intending to build means having an eye to building in the future.
Well, that certainly would be my submission, but I think it, self-build housing can mean not just housing that is built by the people who go to live there. It can cover housing that they get a builder to build for them.
Yes, yes, but I appreciate that. But you might submit that the concept of looking to the future or to doing something in the future is assisted by the concept of commission the building of.
Absolutely. I do agree, my lord, with that because you commission something at a point in time.
You might also submit, though you don't, I think, need to for these purposes, that the next bit, and intends to occupy, also clearly looks to something still to be done in the future. Though, of course, that would only be possible if the dwelling existed.
Yes, I think it is right, my lord, to take intends to build or commission the building of a new dwelling as a composite phrase and to look at that and say, well, particularly when, as your lordship has identified, you look to the idea of commissioning a building. That is something that happens at a particular point in time, right at the start of the process. That is consonant with the interpretation which I'm proposing, which is that, in truth, that phrase does look to the future. It is forward-looking, it is to build in the future, and would not therefore be apt to have the circumstances where you have started building but not finished building a new dwelling.
Right.
So all of that fits together, we say, in addition to the gap point, to say that actually, even if you just read, as it were, Regulations 54a and 54b in isolation, they are designed, and in my submission clearly so, to operate in circumstances where planning permission has been obtained in advance of a claim being made and where none of the building work has been embarked upon. So the express wording of those two regulations, 54a and 54b, shows in my submission that the self-build housing exemption can only be claimed after planning permission is granted but before development is commenced. And for normal prospective grants of planning permission for self-build housing, it's not a problem at all because there would be a gap, particularly when planning permission is granted and when the development is commenced to allow those steps to be taken. But for Section 73a permissions, that gap has been eliminated, making it impossible to obtain the benefit of the self-build housing exemption. And that, that is by design. In short, and we saw that with Regulation 54b.1, to get the benefit of the self-build housing exemption, a person has to follow the rules in the SIL regulations. That is straightforward, and indeed, this is well known. If I could ask your lordships to go in the authorities' bundle to tab 20. We've got two pages from the current Planning Practice Guidance, and the first two pages behind tab 20, the first one is headed, what is the community infrastructure level? And the relevant paragraph is the last substantive paragraph, where it says, some developments may be eligible for relief or exemption. This includes self-builders. There are strict criteria that must be met and procedures that must be followed to obtain the relief or exemption. So there's the distinction there between eligibility and actually obtaining it, but making it absolutely clear, strict criteria and procedures that must be followed. And then, very similar thing is over the page, it's roughly in the middle of the page, the second block of text before the bullet points. The following can be subject to an exemption or relief where the relevant criteria are met and the correct process is followed. And the second bullet point is self-build houses and flats. So it is made clear by the Planning Practice Guidance that strict criteria must be met and procedures must be followed to obtain the benefit of the relief or exemption. And it is, I think, the way the judge put it below, it's a feature of the SIL regulations that there needs to be strict procedural compliance for a person to obtain the benefit of a relief or exemption. Now, I say that is clear from Regulation 54b, from what we've seen in Regulation 54b.1. Must submit a claim in accordance with this regulation and indeed, 54b.5. A claim is valid if it complies with the requirements of paragraph 2. And indeed, there's a similar approach taken in Regulation 31. Paragraph 8, an assumption of liability notice is valid if it complies with the requirements of paragraph 2. So it really is, in my submission, a feature of the SIL regulations that there needs to be strict procedural compliance to get the benefit. Now, the intention underlying that, the intention underlying the self-build housing exemption is, of course, to incentivise self-build housing, but not in every case, regardless of procedural compliance. That underlying intention to incentivise self-build housing is subject to the need to comply with the relevant procedural requirements. And those parts of Regulation 54b expressly make obtaining the benefit of the exemption subject to that procedural compliance. So the intention underlying the self-build housing exemption is not to provide the exemption for all self-build housing. The intention, as reflected in the regulations, 54a and 54b as actually drafted, is that the exemption should be available for self-build housing where there has been procedural compliance. And so it is, in my submission, entirely appropriate if one is asking, what is the purpose of these regulations to adopt a purpose of interpretation? It is part and parcel of that purpose that the correct procedure must be followed in order to benefit from the exemption. And the wider policy context, of course, is that we are concerned here with Section 73a planning permissions. That's what triggers the effect of Regulation 75. And necessarily, Section 73a includes development carried out before planning permission was granted, development which needed planning permission but did not have it. So in every case of a Section 73a planning permission, a breach of planning control will have occurred. And the other thing, of course, to bear in mind is that this exemption was, if I can put it this way, slotted into the existing SIL... slotted into the existing SIL regulations alongside other reliefs and exemptions that operate on the same lines. I think where Lord Justice Limblom identified when we were looking at regulation two-one, that reliefs includes a whole series of reliefs and exemptions, some of which were in the SIL regs originally, charitable relief, others which have been added in over a period of time. But the general approach has been the same in relation to retrospective planning permission in section seventy-three A. So if I could ask your lordships to go back to the supplementary bundle briefly and look at the two thousand and nine consultation, which is behind tab eighteen. And it's page one to eight. On page one to eight, there's a heading in the middle of the page where there's no planning permission. Paragraph four thirty-five makes the point that it's first necessary for the planning position to be regularised. Four thirty-six says the amount of SIL to be paid can only be determined once retrospective planning permission has been granted. And then importantly in my submission, paragraph four thirty-seven, buildings that are granted retrospective planning permission under section seventy-three A and one seventy-seven will automatically be in SIL default.
That, you say that can only mean, in other words, the gap has been, as you put it just now, eliminated?
Well, this is, as it were, the elimination of the gap relates specifically to regulation fifty-four A and fifty-four B. They came along after this document. My submissions here are about how the SIL regulations generally were designed.
But this consultation was taking place?
Two thousand and nine, so it's before the SIL regulations. It was the consultation on the SIL regulations and there were draft regulations that were attached to it. Your lordships will see that on from page one hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
So the point I'm making here.
But at this time, the policy was that there shouldn't be very many exemptions and in the end it was really just charities.
Yes, and that what certainly has changed is that more exemptions and reliefs have been added in, but they have been added into the SIL regulations as they were originally designed. And the consultation made clear, section seventy-three A will automatically be in SIL default. And we see that over the page on one two nine as a second extract, saying much the same. Paragraph four one nine five talks about the importance of regularising the position where there's been a breach of planning control. But then relevant to this in particular is paragraph four point one nine six, the last sentence, in situations where retrospective planning permission is granted, payment of SIL is due immediately from the landowners. And that's what happens when the default provisions and in regulation thirty-three, which actually exists now, kick in. So SIL payment is due immediately from the landowner. And the result of that is that no other person can assume liability because the landowner is fixed with that liability. And also, payment is due immediately. No one, you can't, claim a relief or an exemption. And indeed, you can't rely on a twenty-eight day payment period or the installments that might otherwise pay. So the original design of the SIL regulations was that SIL payment due immediately from the landowner, no relief in those circumstances can be claimed of any sort for a section seventy-three A planning permission. Now, I accept this is before the self-build housing exemption. But the self-build housing exemption was slotted into the structure that was already established.
Have you told us or has someone told us which parts of the statutory scheme were then slotted in in that way?
We have the two thousand and fourteen explanatory memorandum, which is page one four seven of the supplementary bundle behind tab twenty. I think your lordships were showing this earlier. This is what introduced the, I think I'm right in saying, the social housing relief as well as the
So.
Self-build housing relief.
What should we look at then? Reliefs and exemptions at seven thirteen?
Yes.
What I was really getting at was looking at the regulations themselves. We've got them in the amended form here.
Yes.
Is there something, is there, is there, is there a document that helps us to understand what the insertions were by way of amendment?
Not a single document, if your lordships have.
Well, so fifty-four, as the name implies, fifty-four A and fifty-four B came in. And the A and the B are the giveaway, presumably.
What we have in this form that's come from, I think, Westlaw, it identifies where words were added, for example. So this, you can see for the current version.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice not to have to do the sleuthing for ourselves, really.
Yes. There is no.
The notes, I think we get some help, don't we? At the foot of fifty-four A in this print, notes added by Community Infrastructure Levy Amendment Regulations and the number February twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen.
So for this, your lordships have both the explanatory memorandum for the two thousand and fourteen regulations in the supplementary bundle, which I've just shown your lordships. And then also in tab eighteen of the authorities bundle, you actually have the two thousand and fourteen amendment regulations themselves. So what introduced the self-build housing exemption is there. But that's not a complete set of the amending regulations. There's also behind tab nineteen, the two thousand and nineteen amendment regulations. But I certainly don't think there is a single document before the court that explains when and how the exemptions released were added.
Here we are, the court is seeking to construe regulations that are meant to be digestible, easily implemented, readily used by those who are self-builders, among others, i.e. ordinary people, if I may put it like that. And here we are in the Court of Appeal, straining to unpick it all.
Well, it may be that I've misunderstood your lordship's question.
Well, no, well, you didn't, I don't think. You understood it perfectly and answered it conscientiously. But you're invited, what your presence of mission invites us to do, I think, is to look at extraneous material, it is extraneous material, to reinforce the interpretation of the provisions themselves for which you contend. I mean, the legitimacy of that exercise seems not to be in dispute here. But I just wonder whether the case is simpler than this somehow.
Yes, I mean, it's not accidental that this is virtually the last thing I'm going to cover. This is certainly not at the core, this document here is not at the core.
I'm not asking you to finish your submissions prematurely. I'm simply observing that perhaps the court would be inclined normally to look at the provisions that were being asked to interpret. This case is about statutory interpretation, to look at the statute or to look at the regulations here and construe them.
Yes, this has arisen, just to be absolutely clear, because of the debate between the appellant and us about what is the purpose of regulation fifty-four A and fifty-four B. That is why we're going back, as it were, to this and the regulator, how it fits in the regulations. So I accept we are doing, as it were, some archaeology, but that is necessary in this case purely for the purposes of this litigation, to seek to identify the intention for the purposes of a purpose of intention. In terms of how a member of the public, whether they're a developer of any sort, approaches this, the regulations as amended are there. They don't need to do any of this digging in order to do that. This is relevant to the distinction, as it were, where the appellant says the intention is to give self-build housing exemption to every self-builder. We say, no, the intention is to give the self-build housing exemption to every housebuilder that complies with the procedural requirements. And in order to do that, I started with the provisions of the regulations, which in my submission make it very clear.
We do understand what you're doing.
I'm grateful, my lord. So the final, as it were, point is just to make it clear that even though it is of course possible where work is done in breach of planning control to regularise it, breaches of planning control is something which should generally be discouraged, not encouraged. And drafting the SIL regulations so that reliefs and exemptions are not available for section seventy-three A planning permissions generally discourage development in breach of planning control. And there is, in my submission, nothing objectionable in saying that a person only gets the benefit of an exemption if they play by the rules. So, my lords, unless I can assist you further, those are my submissions.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Stanley. Yes, we should.
My lord, I'll just.
Shall we just clear the decks a little before we listen to your reply? Right, yes.
And just one point to pick up from the end of Secretary of State's submissions. It's not the appellant's case that a self-builder can always get the exemption. It's the case that a self-builder, or the appellant in this case, could comply with the procedure. There is a difference. There is no part of my case to say that you don't need to comply with procedure. There's quite an important distinction. We say that a self-builder with retrospective permission can comply with the procedure.
Yes.
The submissions from the Secretary of State relied on a consultation document relating to retrospective permissions. It's at page one hundred and thirty-seven, to do with collection and enforcement. And he said that it's very clear what the guidance is in relation to assumption of liability. And took your lordships to page one hundred and forty-one, the third bullet point, and one hundred and forty-four of that document, where he said that it makes it very clear that planning permission, when it has been granted, the authority will expect to receive an assumption of liability from the developer, landowner or other interested party. He said that made it very clear that it all had to be after planning permission. But on that document, it's important, I think, to note, at page one hundred and forty, which is just before all of these paragraphs, makes it absolutely clear that it is not guidance issued under section two-two-one of the Planning Act. So it is surprising then that it's been necessary for the Secretary of State to place weight on that document, which is not a well-known document, but to distance himself from the PPG, which is a very well-known document. It's a public tool that everybody uses to understand the position in relation to the planning system and SIL. And the PPG document is the one that makes clear that you should send in your assumption of liability form in order to speed up the process. And I would submit that that is the document to be preferred here in terms of interpreting the correct approach to assumption of liability. Further on that point, regulation thirty-one, it was said by, I think, both my learned friends, that, well, you can submit the document, but it's not effective, they said, until you get planning permission. That's the way it was put, not effective, doesn't crystallise anything. Well, my lord, that is in flat contradiction to regulation thirty-one four.
Yes, do you want to?
Which on it, sorry, my lord.
Shall we go there?
Yes, it is worth it, it is, behind tab seventeen.
Yes.
And it says, a person is deemed to have assumed liability on the day on which the collecting authority receives a valid assumption of liability notice. And we went before to what makes it valid, that's eight.
So the assumption of liability is effective from the valid assumption of liability notice? Not from the grant of permission, no?
No, from when it is received. Well, there's two things, it's valid when thirty-one-two is complied with, we've been through all of that. But the point that has been made against me today is that, oh, in a way to get past, I think, what the PPG says, is to say, well, you can submit it, but it's not effective. That's what was said.
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, I mean, I understand the submission you're making. Either way, your submission is clearly that on the basis of thirty-one four, it is the submission of the, or the receipt of the valid assumption of liability notice that gives rise to the assumption of liability. Because that's what it says.
That's what it says, yes.
And it doesn't, it's not latent, it doesn't depend and await the grant of planning permission. It's there as a, as a, in existence.
My lord, yes, and the reason I've gone there is because of the PPG, last page behind tab twenty,
Yeah.
which says that you should submit the form before planning permission is granted. So when you read that together with the fact that receipt, obviously, if you submit the form, it will be received. And what thirty-one four says is that once it has been received, you're deemed to have assumed liability, which means it's effective. It isn't the case that you somehow submit it, but it has, it means nothing until you've got planning permission. That's not what thirty-one four says, that's my submission.
Right, I've got, I've got that. But the details of the planning permission are one of the particulars which are specified as having to be set out in the form.
Yes, my lord, and that's the point that I addressed earlier about it's a Secretary of State's own form.
Well, I follow that, but nevertheless, that is the position.
Yes.
If you have to save the detail of the planning permission that you have got, then it can't be a valid notice, subject to that point that you've made.
Subject to that point, my lord, and also the point that, well, yes, subject to that, that is a key point there for me. But also the wording at two, which is, or a form to substantially the same effect.
Yes, but two B isn't qualified by those words.
No, I was reading that as four A, two A, together. And the point, my lord, which I made earlier about the number being the same anyway, in most cases.
Right.
Then the issue about purpose, which I'll just deal with briefly. I've made my submissions earlier as to what the purpose is. But the respondents go back to the purpose of SIL overall and took, your lordship, really back to section two oh five of the two thousand and eight Act. We went to that earlier, but two oh eight, sorry, two oh five, it is important to remember that it's to do with funding infrastructure in a way that does not make development economically unviable. In this, in the operation of the SIL regulations in this way, it undoubtedly does make the development unviable. And that's what Mrs Gardner had been writing to the council repeatedly. She says so in the email exchange that you have in the. She says so in the email exchange that you have in the supplementary bundle when she was dealing with the council. And it's at tab five.
Right, well, we need to...
Page number.
Yes, my lord, just a... Actually, page 46.
Ah, that's the previous numbering, yeah. 153 now. 153 on the right-hand side of the page.
I don't have that. I don't like that.
Right. Well, the original numbering was 46.
Right. I don't seem to have this other 15 number, but I've got the 46.
Ah, well...
I've only got 46 as well, if it's of any comfort to you.
Thank you. I don't quite know how that could have happened, but... There we are. So there's a series of emails, of course, but this is one sent by Trinity Gardner. And you can see from the last paragraph there.
No, that is, sorry, that is different. What you're looking at, in the supplementary bundle.
That's right. Yes, just the supplementary bundle. It's got page...
Yes, no, you are in a different... Yeah, sorry, no. That is 46 in the supplementary bundle, right-hand side of the page. Confusingly, there's another 46 later on, which has 153 on it as well.
Oh dear.
Anyway, we're now in the same place. Trinity Gardner to Laura Getcliffe.
Laura Getcliffe, she's writing to us.
On the 7th of...
It's the last paragraph there, where she talks about the fact that the dwelling is the main residence. SIL composition at late stage in our build, critical issue for us, threatens the viability of our project. And then goes on to make the obvious point that we're exactly the type of residents to whom the SIL exemption is supposed to be available. And then the rest of the correspondence we needn't go through other than to just note that she kept on asking the council to take a different view of the legislation. A point was made by my learned friend for the respondent, first respondent, that, well, the council was never asked to extend the time on the permission. The correspondence overall makes for desperate reading. It's quite clear that the appellants here were panicking, becoming extremely concerned about the imposition potentially of £118,000. They were desperately writing in their capacity to the council. So I don't think it's fair to say that they didn't ask for it to be extended. But just on that, page 56, when Miss Chesterton got involved in her personal capacity to assist Miss Gardner, sorry, Mrs. Gardner, she had been writing as well, but she then wrote to Becky, so this is page 56. "I understand from Mrs. Gardner that the planning permission decision is imminent. Please advise on the granting of the SIL exemption for this claim in accordance with the council's duties under 54b4 of the Regulations." And this was urging them to act as quickly as practicable. Because they knew that once this permission is issued, they're going to be bowled out, basically. That's what they knew. So it isn't right to say that either they were trying to avoid any sort of liability, they were trying to act in breach of planning permission, they were doing everything that they thought was correct. And in my submission, they did do everything that they could, including complying with the requirements of the procedure. But as housebuilders, to be presented with a bill of £118,000, your lordships may have looked at their financial data. It's clear that that's unaffordable for them. That's unviable for them. It's not possible, really, for them to deal with that. And it will result in the sale of the house, I'm sure. So that's not the purpose of the SIL regulations or the Act at all, which is not supposed to render anything unviable. The other point that I would make on the purpose is the purpose that I was advancing in asking your lordships to deduce or deuce is, what's the purpose of the exemption? That's the point. It's not the purpose of the SIL per se. What's the purpose of introducing the exemption? And that is clear from the memorandum that we've already gone to and some of the other guidance. It is to enable and encourage self-builders. And when your lordships are thinking of that, I would just also ask you to remember about social housing. These same supposed ousting of retrospective permission applies to the social housing provision as well. What possible purpose can be served in disincentivising somebody from providing social housing because they may have knocked down a wall or two earlier, which they have to then get permission for? That is not the purpose. And on that, I would just ask the lordships also to go back to the authorities that it is necessary to look realistically at what the Act requires, to not be blinkered or have tunnel vision. And finally, the IDT case, which says that if you are going to be liable for a financial liability through tax legislation, it must be clearly set out. Here, it's the opposite. The clarity given here is that you will be liable, you will be given an exemption from self-built SIL if you comply with the procedure. And as I've sought to do in my earlier submissions, demonstrated that on a straightforward, fair, realistic reading, there is nothing to oust the section 73a permission. There's nothing there. It is a construct that has required all sorts of jumping from provision to provision to go through some paper chase to try to then advance a suggestion that, well, the SIL regulations were designed that way. That's the way it was put. Well, there's no need to design them in this complicated manner. All that had to be said was that a section 73a application cannot benefit from the exemption. That's what was required. There is no need for this strange manipulation of all the wording, which clearly has various different potential meanings, because that's what we're obviously arguing about. Whether is means the past, or has been, or intends, whether it could be or couldn't be, or whether it's to be aligned with commissioned. But that is not consistent with the case law that requires somebody to know what their liability will be. The other point, the other sort of theme that was put forward, I think mostly by my learned friend for the first respondent, was this idea that you need to calculate liability. And unless you can calculate the liability, you can't issue the liability notice and you can't calculate what is required. Well, again, there is no need to go to that point. If your lordships could just go to 54b...
Yes.
It's 54b4. What is required here by way of notifying, because that's what has to happen at 54b3. The lapsing happens where the collecting authority has not notified the claimant of its decision on the claim. The claim is for a self-build exemption. That's the claim. 54b4 then says that you must grant the exemption and notify the claimant in writing of the exemption granted, brackets, or the amount of relief granted, as the case may be, and provide an explanation of the requirements of 6716. So in a case like this, there is no difficulty in notifying the claimant, the person who's made the claim, the appellant here, of the exemption. You can notify them that they have obtained the exemption. That doesn't rely on any detailed calculations. All you've got to do is notify them. That's no doubt why you're supposed to do that as soon as is practicable. All you've got to do. In this case, they simply had to be told, "Your exemption is successful. You've got your exemption." There is no need to have long, complicated calculations. But even if that were required, with the SIL Form 1, all the floor space and all the numbers required are provided. So SIL Form 1, which is with the application reference number on it. That sets out the floor space. And any calculations that need to be done can be done, if they had to be done. They certainly didn't have to be done in this case, but if they do. But one could read, "This is not requiring any calculations to be done. They're certainly not mandatory to do that." But the objection put forward by the first respondent was that, well, local authorities aren't funded to make lots of calculations and have to revise them. And what happens if things change between the grant and the application? Well, my lord, in that particular case, it often happens that applications change. And it also happens that an application is granted permission, but then there are subsequent changes made. And the SIL regulations allow for that. You can issue a liability notice, which you in any case only have to do after you've granted permission. That's a totally separate process. But there is nothing unusual about issuing a new liability notice. It happens all the time.
Is that provided for in the regulation?
Yes, it is, my lord. I think it's Regulation 65.
Shall we look for it?
I'm not sure if we've got this, but it is 65. It should be in the bundle.
What does that provide then?
It provides that you can issue a liability notice and then when the calculated amount changes for some reason, as it often does, the council must issue a new liability notice and that cancels out the old one. That's what it is. So I'll just ask those behind me to check if it is 65. I'm almost...
Well, if it is, we haven't got it.
We haven't got it.
I can provide that, if it's helpful.
Right. It's not available now.
It could be made available, I think. Can't hear, afraid.
Well, we'll take...
If I could just turn around.
Yes, do please.
Very helpful. It's not in front of you, other than in the judgment below. It is referred to there. So the good goes there, because that's...
Well, let's look at that, anyway.
A paragraph 50, I'm told.
Paragraph 50.
Apologies, I got that wrong. It's in the Herensley case, the case that you have.
I thought that you might, for the first time, be visiting the judge.
That's true.
But in Herensley...
Yes, it is actually, very well. Thank you. And I was right that it's 55, 65. So, my lord, if you just look through that, you'll see that a revised liability notice must be issued where anything changes.
65...
It's paragraph 50 of the judgment.
Yeah, I've got that.
And what the judge does is quote Regulation 65. The part I'm looking at is, well, the sub-paragraph four.
Four, is it? Must issue a revised liability notice. If the chargeable amount... Yeah. So that would, you submit, that would that would cover the situation in which the planning permission was granted for something not quite the same as the application.
That's right, my lord. And that routinely happens. That's not, I mean, in practice that happens. It's not at all unusual to reissue revised notices. And the same thing happens, for example, with the whole calculation process for section 73 applications, for example. If your lordship goes to Regulation...
I'm sorry, just before you leave, as you say, we've only got Regulation 65 in the judgment in Herensley.
Yes.
And this is talking about a liability notice, which is, as I understand it, the antithesis of an exemption.
Yes.
And it's got to set out all the things, such as the chargeable amount and all the rest of it. Though I see it does also refer to where an exemption has been granted, who, and the amount. This is presumably what's referred to in 54b4. When the collecting authority must grant the exemption and notify the claimant of the exemption granted. It's talking about one of these, isn't it?
Well, my lord, it's... The liability notice comes after, there are three stages, really. The liability notice comes after the grant of planning permission.
Yes.
Right? And that's also supposed to be issued expeditiously after permission is granted. In this case, it didn't come till July, so several months after the February date of the permission. But in the context of working out how much a liability notice is, it's not uncommon to use the floor space to determine that and to issue the liability notice. And then if there's some subsequent change, the point that was being said is that it's all very well, such as the case of ours, where everything would be exempt. So there would be no amount to be on a liability notice. It would be a nil amount. But what you were being addressed on, my lord, was a situation where there could be a sort of a hybrid development, where part of it is exempt and part of it is not. And how are you going to calculate the parts that are not?
I may have completely misunderstood the point. I thought we were being addressed on the premise that it may well be that the exemption will involve no pounds, no pence.
Yes.
But you've got to actually do some form of assessment and calculation to get to that point.
Yes.
And the argument was, well, you've got to have permission before you can set about that. That was the argument, as I understood it.
Yes. Well, my lord, that's the point, that you don't need to have permission.
Well, yeah, we're going round in circles and so on.
Well, yeah, because SIL Form 1, which is in the bundle, I won't go back to it, but it's the form that you have to set out to establish SIL liability. The council asks for that before you have planning permission to establish what the SIL liability could be. In that, you set out the floor space, and that's the calculation. You went to the formula with my learned friend for the first respondent. She showed you the formula. You put those figures in and the council can calculate what the liability is. There's a separate exercise, which is to send a liability notice, which is to formally say, after you've got permission, what the liability is. And then after that, when you commence, there'll be a demand notice as well. The only point that needs to be made here is that it isn't necessary, or there is no reason why there cannot be a calculation of the exemption granted based on the documentation that's before the council. If for some reason that changes later, then that amount will change with the issue of the liability notice. This isn't an impediment, is the point. The only thing that you were told was an impediment, was that the council didn't have resources to do this and that they wouldn't be able to set about making these calculations because they didn't have time to do it. The only point I'm making is that you can make the calculation if needed. In our case, you didn't need one. There was no need for anything. It's a self-build exemption. And the regulations here are entirely apt to grant that based on the documentation that was before the council. There's nothing, there's no problem with waiting for permission. That's the point.
Right. Well, I think we have that submission.
I think all I was trying to do is just to point out that this block that is said to exist, it isn't actually a problem. There isn't a need to have these detailed calculations at this stage. And if there are, you can do them. There isn't a problem with that.
Right.
What I was going to do is just make that point good as well by reference to 58ZA.
Right. So this is a... Right, so this is a provision we've not looked at yet.
We haven't looked at this, it's in the bundle. So this provision, together with the provision that we did look at earlier about section 73 applications, are all to do with carrying over relief that may have been granted. In this case, it's to do with carrying over anything that one may have done in relation to a planning permission or a development. And if you grant a subsequent permission under section 73, you don't have to apply all over again, all the steps that you took in relation to the previous development apply. And that's for any planning permission, it's not, that would apply to retrospective, it would apply to any permission, I submit. And the same point is made in relation to the regulation that I went to earlier, which says that it's the second in time, or the most recent in time, that has the issue with which of the two you apply, which of the two liability notices you engage. But even there, a subsequent calculation may need to be made, and that's set out in the regulation, that if you are relying on a section 73 that you have obtained after you've got permission for something else, the liability may have gone up, or it may have gone down, and you have to recalculate. So recalculating in and of itself is a part and parcel of the SIL Regulations. It's never set in stone, the provisions are there, so that is not a knockout blow for section 54b. That was advanced quite strongly, I think, by the first respondent. There's nothing there that stops that. Yes, the other point that was made about, as it broadly made, really, about the idea that the procedure and the ousting of section 73a permissions is in order to ensure that there is no breach of planning control, that was, that was again sort of put forward. My lord, on that, the requirement to follow procedure applies to all planning permissions. It doesn't only apply to section 73a permissions. That need to follow procedure applies to everything, so that it is nothing to do, in my submission, with breaches of planning permission, this need to follow procedure. They're not singled out for that purpose. So that's not the purpose of ousting, i- if it is ousting, of section 73a permissions. That is not borne out, because otherwise there'd be no need for these strict procedures for everything else. And just on that point as well, just to make that point good, my lord, if you could go to tab 1 of the authorities' bundle. And it's section 72, 172. 1A and B. Just dealing with the point of punishing, really, somebody who undertakes breaches of planning control, and particularly in a case like this, where it was entirely inadvertent, and that's agreed. 172 makes it absolutely clear that any enforcement action is discretionary, it has to be expedient, having regard to the provisions of the development plan and any other material considerations. It is not penal, it would be, it is entirely inconsistent with the enforcement regime in the Town and Country Planning Act, which is the place for penalizing people, to say that somehow the SIL Regulations have taken up that role and decided to penalize parties who otherwise would not be penalized for breaches of planning control. So in my submission, that is not the purpose, and therefore, that can't be a justification for ousting retrospective planning commissions. Just on that, just finally on that point, is it would be using the SIL Regulations in a way that penalizes an applicant or an appellant in a way that the Town and Country Planning Act doesn't do. In this case, there was no, there's no enforcement action against the appellant, and could never have been, and always it contemplated. So that, that is, that is an entire mismatch and doesn't do justice to the provisions. I think, my lord, unless there's anything else I can assist with, those are points I was going to make in reply.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much, Shay, thank you. Well, we're grateful to all of you for your very careful and thorough submissions, both written and oral. It will not surprise you to hear me say that we are going to reserve our judgments. A draft of our judgments will be circulated in a normal way and due course for typographical and minor factual correction only, not to reengage with the legal merit. With the return on those draft judgments as circulated, there should come a draft order, as agreed, and any consequential submissions at that stage, please. Thank you very much. All rise.